Tonight we have a guest, just to quickly go over some questions that the council had regarding sturdy's helipad. So we have Bill Murray, who's representing sturdy from Places Associates. Hey, Bill.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
It's really hard to hear in the back of the room, so I apologize.
Oh, that's all right.
Ready?
I am.
Okay. My name's William Murray. I recognize some faces. I'm here on behalf of sturdy health for the temporary helicopter landing pad to be located between Atwood Street, O'Neill Boulevard, and Pearl Street, as shown on our plan that's on the board. We have updated plans that address some of the comments that I incorporated in my presentation last time, and I issued an errata for some of the information that I provided to the committee as a whole, in that the number of monthly visits for the helicopter was reported at sixteen. They average eight. And with me tonight are gentlemen from Boston Med Flight that will give you even more accurate numbers. And I'll let them speak in a brief moment. The other thing that the Boston Med Flight gentleman will address is there are night flights that a Med Flight does here. So with me this evening is Marissa Blackwood from Vaness Hagen, Brussels. Vaness Hagen, Brussels are the design engineers for the helicopter landing pad, and they're representing sturdy in front of the FAA and MASTOT, MAA, Massachusetts Aeronautic Association. So Marissa can talk about the design of all aspects of the helicopter landing pad. With me tonight from Boston Med Flight are Mark Ornato and Robert Holst, and they can address any questions you have on the helicopter operations. And then finally, we did give the subcommittee responses, written responses to questions, and we're happy to take any questions regarding our responses to those. So we'd like to entertain any questions that the committee have, and we'd like to answer all of your questions to the best of our ability.
Thank you. So the rest of the council, everybody should have gotten the email with the answers to the questions that were submitted. So I'm assuming that we all read them, and then we will, I will open it up, questions. So to start off, my questions were the ones I sent to you, but I also, so my biggest concern is the sound and the lights with the proximity of the houses that were so close.
Gentlemen, Med Flight, how many lights?
And please introduce yourselves.
Good evening. I really appreciate being here. Thank you very much. My name is Mark Ornato. I'm the Director of Aviation Operations for Boston Med Flight. So you had mentioned the lights and the noise of the aircraft. It is a helicopter. It does create some noise. But a couple of things on that. Number one, we are trying to be good stewards of the communities that we serve. We are here to help your community members to get to a higher level of care where we can. We at Boston Med Flight fly the quietest helicopter in its class, realizing it's a helicopter and still a helicopter. And the noise that we use, I mean, the lights that we use, there are lights on the helipad that are being designed, and we do have some lights on the helicopter, but we also use night vision goggles. And night vision goggles allow us to have fewer lights on the aircraft at night shining on the ground than we otherwise would because the fewer lights we have, the better with that.
I did read that. I read the night goggles, which I was surprised about. What about, so the lights on the ground, that was my concern, the lights on the ground that, will they be constantly on? Are they bright? Are they white? Are they green?
They're existing. Marissa could answer that.
Hi there. Marissa Blackwood from BHB. The lights that we show proposed are eight flush lights on the ground. They are night vision goggle rated lights, and they are green, and they will only be turned on when a helicopter is coming in for a landing. Other than that, there are, I think, two or three existing lights on the surrounding poles, but we're not proposing any other lights than the eight flush lights for the landing pad.
All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Activated by the pilots.
Yes.
I also read that as well. So yes, that's good. I was hoping there wasn't, you know, big bright lights that are constantly going to be shining into people's windows. Councilor Angelo?
Thank you, Vice President Dolan. I'm not sure exactly who it's be directed to, but I mean, I spent six years in the Marine Corps, and most of my time was in and out of helicopters and stuff. So will there be like a, I don't know, like a detail that would, you know, protect, you know, people, you know, when the helicopter's coming in to make sure that nobody gets too close and that is safe?
Yes.
That's one of my questions.
Well, thank you for the service. Yes, the answer is there's a standing operating procedure at sturdy, and we had an extended discussion about it. What will happen is no helicopter will land until security is on the site. So security gets there before they land, security is there while they are landing, and security doesn't leave until they have fully departed. And it is likely the first couple of times that this new pad gets used, it's, we're probably going to call the police to help us close off O'Neill for the few moments that the helicopter's on the ground, just so that people can get used to the fact that there's a helicopter going to be there. But standing operating procedure sturdy is going to take care of the security of the field. So they will have three people assigned to the field. There are three sides that will have chain link fence, and they may even have four people assigned to the field depending upon their manpower, but they will always have three. So they will clear the field, make sure there are no obstacles, set up a perimeter around the fence, and then they won't depart until the helicopter's well and clear.
And I've, I won't mention any names, but I've, I personally know some of the high officials at the hospital for many years that dealt with coming in. And to me, when we first talked, the number of times, he was disputing that. He was saying it's nowhere near that number. So it's not like it is a high traffic time or anything. And I think you kind of corrected that a little bit.
Just, just, sorry to interrupt, but just to remind you, the current helicopter landing pad is on the roof.
Right.
So the level of security to protect the perimeter, they don't need it.
Right, exactly. Yeah. He was just disputing that it was, he was even saying that it's even less than the numbers that you were saying, you know, that would be coming in from what his time, you know, being there.
And he's right, so I'm going to let the Med Flight, the Med Flight guys, we had a conference call, and I'm going to let them give you the latest numbers. These are the actual Med Flight helicopter flights.
But I had one other question that you might be able to answer too, is, yeah, and one of it is, because it kicks up a lot, you know, a lot of wind and everything, and will there be like a time or, you know, a procedure that they'll keep that parking lot from having dust and sand? Because when it comes in and starts blowing sand around and starts sandblasting all the cars and stuff that might be in the area or across the street, just, you know, keeping that, you know, tarmac.
I'm going to let the Med Flight guys tell you what the criteria is for landing.
Okay.
And that should address that.
All right.
Mike, the maintenance was in the questions, too.
It was. Okay.
Hi, I'm Sir Daphne, or even I should say, Robert Holst, Boston Med Flight. Thank you for your service, by the way. So for landings, I did a quick review over the last two years, from May 1, 2023 to current. We've done seventy-two landings at sturdy hospital. Twenty-four of them were after nine AM in the morning, meaning they're daytime landings. And we did, I'm sorry, it's twenty-four landings after, after nine o'clock at night. I had the wrong time, sorry. And then over the two years, that averages out to twelve per year on average after nine o'clock at night. And then the other two-thirds of them, which are forty-eight landings, were during the day in those two-year time period, breaking down to about twenty-four per year during the day. Addressing the sand issue, so the pads, every pad that we have is not a sand dissolved pad. They're all free of that. The way they do ice removal is a chemical, not a chemical, a ice removal substance called urea, and it's noncorrosive to helicopters, and that's what they'll be putting on the pad. So there'll be no sand in there for us to blow around in that pad area. And that pad area is one-seventy by one-eighty?
Roughly bigger than that.
Yeah.
The whole parking lot is being reserved for the pad.
Right. So it's a huge area, and so by the time that any of the rotor wash makes it outside that fencing area, the wind is extremely low.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Council of void?
Thank you, Vice President Dolan. I'd say a quick question going back to the light intensity. First, I'm in favor of this, but I just wanted to ask the question for everyone else. Could you speak to the intensity of those lights on the ground? You know, if they were maybe in the center here, how they would look? I understand they're night vision rated, so I assume they're a little bit less intense on the ground, but...
Yeah, I don't have an exact number for what the rating may be, but they are pretty minimal. They're designed so that when the pilots have their goggles on, they can see it, but they are not bright by any means. They're most likely, they're, they're less bright than your typical street light. So the flow, or excuse me, the expansive where the light will hit is minimal. It's mainly just to create a square so that the pilots see these eight lights, and they know where to land.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilor Sawyer?
Hi. I was concerned about residents and the impact to their homes, if there's anything, you know, shingles or something that comes off of the houses, you know. Do you have any, anything that you're planning on helping with those things if they happen, or is there anything else that you...
If, I can take this one.
I'm sorry.
So that was, that was in the questions?
Yes.
So they have the contact person?
Yes. I just didn't know if there was like what they had planned on, helping with those things if they, if they happen with a helicopter, kind of damage to homes of any kind, kind of thing.
So that, that's the response, is that sturdy has an insurance specialist that can handle any claim or have any conversation about that.
Okay.
Councilor Holmes?
Thank you. I just really want to thank Acting President Dolan for bringing you back in here. I think that most of us are obviously in favor of this, but just wanted to get some clarification on how it was going to impact the neighbors. So thank you for being willing to come in again for the additional information.
Yeah, and we are, I would, I would think that most of us are in favor of this. We realize that lives are at stake, and, you know, we're certainly not trying to make it harder for you to do this for sturdy, and we're very grateful for sturdy for being in our city. But that is, that's my word. Those are, you know, my residents that I represent, and I want to make sure that, you know, I got you these questions, and I got answers to the questions I needed, and as far as the rest of the council as well. So we just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence to...
Would the council entertain a brief presentation by Med Flight on the care that they take when they make an approach? And all of the, it's not a presentation. He's just got a few comments to show you how careful Med Flight is in considering everybody when they respond.
You said comments? Is that what you said? Comments?
Yeah, comments.
Okay. I just want to get to Pamela Foe's question, then we can do that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
I'm in favor of this as well, and I don't want you to take this remark as being contrary to that. I do have two concerns, and they're not really questions, they're just ongoing concerns. One is, we've now heard three different versions of how many flights there are. That raises to me a concern about how exact your information actually is when you come before us, and how much we can rely on it prospectively, not necessarily about helicopters, but about anything. So that's one concern I have. The other is, having read about the crash at Reagan National Airport, and one of the causes was night vision goggles limiting, apparently, apparently limiting the vision of the helicopter pilots. So I am curious about to what extent you and, what's the closest airport?
Logan?
Huh?
Green.
No.
Green.
Green. TF Green have coordinated on incoming flights and outgoing flights.
Wait, if that isn't your kind of question, I don't know what it is.
Thank you very much for the question. First, we'll address the, how close we are to TF Green. One of our Level One Trauma Centers that we utilize very frequently is Rhode Island Hospital, which is just north of the airport. We're in there frequently, and we coordinate with the air traffic control facility there. Now, we don't have a route structure such as in Washington DC where helicopters and airplanes fly in very close proximity and separated by a letter of agreement. We don't have that. We have great separation with that, and we have distance of miles. So we're not, we're not anywhere near that. The closest we get to TF Green is five nautical miles, a little bit more than five statute miles. So the deconfliction piece is not there, and we're always talking air traffic control. We have to in that particular airspace. In the other airspaces that are around, the Taunton airports, the Mansfield Airport, common traffic advisory frequencies, pilots are very professional across the board. So we talk to them, they talk to us, we know where they are. So that's not as big of a concern with the airspace. More of a concern in Boston, where we do fly in closer proximity, but we have very good routes and altitudes that we have to fly, and the airplanes have theirs. The FAA just did a retrospective look after that accident, and I happened to be at FAA headquarters last week getting the brief on that, how we do in Boston. And we have very rigorous separation standards in Boston, and more importantly, they're followed. And that's from the FAA.
More importantly, what?
Those, those rules are followed. We follow the rules within Logan. So hopefully that minimizes the fear that, that that particular accident did cause. Just globally, how we fly all the time, again, we are, we serve the community, and we want to be a welcome part of the community. So we have what we call a fly neighborly program. All the communities we serve have noise sensitive areas, and we try to avoid those noise sensitive areas at all costs. There are some times where the weather's going to drive us to fly through one of the noise sensitive areas, and we will always try to let the proper authorities of the hospital know that, hey, because of the wind that night, we had to fly this route, and that brought us in there. But we fly neighborly, we get the noise abatement areas that are in proximity to the landing zone. We plot those on our aviation map, so when the pilots come in, they know where to avoid. So we generally follow the FAA guidance that is given in the study that was done, and then we mark where the noise sensitive areas are. So we can slide a little bit here, a little bit there to, to avoid that. We want to serve you and bring you to the hospital. We don't want to create a distraction for the community.
Thank you.
Address the hover.
Oh, yeah. There was, there was a question that was presented about hovering in the, in the LZ. My, my job as, as the pilot and our pilots, get the medical professionals on the ground in an efficient manner so that they can get to the patient, start their treatment, and we can, we can get right to Boston or Rhode Island, wherever we have to go. So we don't ever take time to hover or delay our landing and create more noise than we have to. Once we do touch the ground, again, the technology's in the aircraft thirty seconds, and we can shut all our things off, and then the aircraft gets shut off. So it's only a thirty-second delay once we do land, where we shut the aircraft off. And then we have what we call a quick start checklist. So it starts very quickly, efficiently, and then we can get up off the ground and, and become less of a distraction for the community.
Does anybody, Councilor Colas?
What about vertical takeoffs and landing? I believe one of the, the things that was mentioned a couple of weeks ago was sort of taking off and moving vertically before traversing down the flight path to avoid sort of affecting a broad range of areas. Is that, and that was one of the questions that we were kind of asking in the, in the list of questions. Is that part of the SOP for the flight procedures?
Yep. That technique is actually how the manufacturer teaches us how to fly the aircraft. There are several reasons we do that. We go vertically to, to a certain altitude. If for some reason we had an emergency there, we can fly away, it's not a problem. Or if we did some other type of takeoff. So it is between one and three hundred feet, we go straight up, and then we take off. So that's not a delayed hover. That's part of the, the profile the aircraft has to fly.
But so that's not to avoid the impact of the noise?
Well, it also does that, yes. So it does. It's the byproduct of that. It's, it's more from a safety perspective. It's the way the helicopter... It's the way the helicopter performs, um, and as a byproduct, it's quieter for the community.
Got it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all for coming, I really appreciate it and the information was helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From the docket of April first, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve a special term application from Sturdy Health of Park Street for a temporary helicopter, helicopter landing pad to be located adjacent to the high hospital campus while the permanent landing pad is under construction.
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or anything right now? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'd like to call for an adjournment of Public Works at six forty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call a special committee on compensation and classification to order at six fifty. Members of my council, Council Tavoris and Council Reynolds, uh, actually Council Reynolds is, uh, not here today. Okay. For the docket of March fourth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve the following amendment to the personal rules and regulations for non-representative employees. Article twenty-two stipends, section two A, a stipend may be paid to an employee in the case of a temporary assignment of duties or responsibilities of a higher level position or other significant duties not part of the employee's regular position. A stipend may also be given to when employees temporarily assigned new projects requiring a higher level of complexity, responsibility and/or independence. Said stipend amount shall be calculated using the amount of time assigned temporary duties in greater of the base salary rate of pay for the higher level position or ten percent above the employee's regular base rate of pay. Subject to funding, the stipend shall be a one-time payment made at the conclusion of the temporary duties herein described and does not constitute an increase in salary. A temporary assignment of duties described herein shall be for a minimum of two weeks and a maximum of one hundred and eighty days except when an extension is recommended by the Director of Human Resources and approved by the mayor. Second. Thank you, Council Tavoris. Um, basically, we, we discussed this at the public hearing. Um, this is a great thing. Uh, we have, um, sometimes extenuating circumstances where we have, uh, individuals that, uh, like recently, um, someone had to go away for a military assignment and, um, and we had Deb Gould had to fill in and she's done this repeatedly over and over again. And we have other departments that this happens to. And, um, and it's, um, I think it's a good motivating factor and a well worth, uh, thing for people to show, uh, the city's appreciation of all the extra hard work, because, uh, this is not easy for someone to be having a full-time job and then basically take on another second full-time job. So, um, so this for the city is a drop in the bucket. Uh, gives a little bit of a, uh, thank you and appreciation to, uh, the employees that are doing this. So I fully support this and, and I hope everybody else will too as well. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment, no, no concern. Um, I, I love that we're codifying this and creating an objective mechanism for being able to compensate employees that go above and beyond when, uh, when it's needed, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes two zero. That's all for compensation and classification. I call for an adjournment at six fifty-two. Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes two zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you. And so now we're, we're going to have a little presentation from the folks at the Global War on Terror. So whoever's speaking.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
It's wonderful to be back. We have made some amazing progress since the last time we were here in October. So, um, just wanted to say thank you, uh, for the opportunity to, uh, be here again. Um, I'd like to introduce the, um, the members that are here tonight. We've got Frank Cook. Uh, we've got Brian Donato, Shane Rio and Scott Mercier. Um, we have other members too, but, um, couldn't make that tonight. So, um, we're going to keep tonight very brief. Uh, just wanted to, um, talk to you about, um...
Laura, you wanted to say your name first for the record?
Laura D. Simone, eight Northfield Road, Attleboro, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo! Okay. So we, um, had a new site. When we were here last, uh, we were going to be across Bandidos in the Veterans Common for a lot of reasons. We, um, are now very proud to say that we're going to be in Capron Park. Um, and, um, there's, as we all know, that there's numerous monuments there, including a lot of military monuments. It just fits. So, uh, we're very happy, um, about, uh, Capron Park and we're thrilled to be working in close conjunction with the Parks Department. So we, we thank them as well. The project status is very exciting. We, um, have, the stone is milled and it is, um, going to stone cutting process. So our, our panels are in process, very exciting. Um, the, uh, the only thing that has yet to be approved, which is the bench, um, our Elks riders, uh, from Lodge ten fourteen, um, have, uh, have donated a bench. And so we just need to get those final specifications, um, you know, done. But we are, we're approved, ready to go, stone's being cut, made our initial down payment, so we are, uh, we're doing all right. On the money, uh, we have, uh, raised, um, just over fifty percent of our, um, of our funds. So our goal is a hundred thousand dollars. And, um, we're very happy that, um, the state, uh, the Shrab Grant, the State Historicals Records Advisory Board, I believe it is, uh, we, uh, were awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant from them. That really helped to fulfill our coffers there, but we still need a lot more. Um, we, we, um, are just over halfway. Um, we absolutely still need a lot of help, but we've got some great, um, upcoming fundraisers. Um, on that note, uh, the month of June, um, we'll be at the Pleasant Street Stop and Shop. And well, you know, the donate a bag program where you go and you pen, you spend two dollars and fifty cents on a bag. For every, for every bag that's purchased, our, um, monument will receive a dollar of that. Doesn't sound like a lot, but every little bit helps. Um, also Friday, June thirteenth, uh, we're going to, um, we've just arranged for a Friday night funnies with Attleboro comedian, uh, Mike Pettit?
Pettit.
Pettit. Um, and, um, he's going to be at the, um, American Legion Lodge, three twelve. Uh, we're very excited about that. So, um, everybody's going to get flyers on all of our fundraising things. And then lastly, probably our biggest event, which is right around the corner on Sunday, May eighteenth, uh, which is a barbecue at the Elks. We have a ton of wonderful raffles. Um, we've got some great food, we've got good bands. Um, and for, um, you know, a low price of twenty dollars, you can, um, you know, twenty dollars per ticket, you can, uh, come. Children under twelve are also invited. Um, they are free, so they're free to eat, uh, free to come and enjoy. Um, councilors, love to have you buy some tickets. Um, so please do, um, you can approach any of us. Um, and we'd be happy to, um, to get you situated and we'd love to see you and your families there, uh, to help support our cause. That's really the only updates that I have.
Did you want to, uh, finish introducing the folks that are with you because I interrupted you?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Did you want to finish introducing the folks that are with you because I interrupted you?
I thought I did.
I thought...
But everybody deserves a second shout out, right? So Frank Cook, Scott Mercier, Shane, uh, Shane Rio and Brian Donato.
Thank you.
And myself, Laura D. Simone, eight Northville Road.
Uh, quick questions?
Yes.
To, uh, Angela.
I, I, I think it's great, um, it's more of a comment, I apologize. But I think it's great and I appreciate it and I certainly can support it. And I do owe you an answer to your email and I will respond and I will be buying tickets as well.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate it.
Council Sawyer?
Hi.
Hi.
I was wondering, um, if you can tell us about where it's going to be in Capron Park?
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, absolutely. Um, so everybody's familiar where the Parks Department is. Um, so there's Parks Department and then there's the Veterans Triangle. Across, and then there's a park, a little parking lot. So just down the berm from the Soldiers and Sailors Monument and in between, um, you know, that, that, uh, the Bald Eagle, uh, wood carving? It's going to be right there. So, um, people that are traveling along one twenty-three will see it. Um, we've made some arrangements for our Memorial Day Parade to honor that location this year. Um, you know, because we'll have a beautiful monument in September there. So, uh, we're very much looking forward to that. So I think the, um, the, um, coalescing of all of those military monuments, all in one location, are going to be really superb. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us again.
Appreciate it. For the eighteenth as well.
All right, very good. And feel free to, um, to visit attleboroGWOT.org, uh, to make your donation. And that's for you all and everybody watching.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, enjoy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One more last addition, uh, the, um, barbecue. If you'd like to buy tickets to the barbecue, you can feel free to go upstairs to the Veterans Services Officer, Ben Quell. He has them.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
I'd like to call this meeting to the, for the municipal council to order. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
The United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, President Delicio was unable to be here tonight due to work commitments. I would like to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, we'll be suspending the rules to take the public hearings out of order. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the first notice for the first public hearing, please?
Certainly. First public hearing. Public hearing regarding the following proposed amendment to chapter twelve of the revised ordinances as follows. Strike section twelve dash three point three E in its entirety and replace it with E. Park or operate any motor vehicle from dusk to dawn on any road, drive or parking area located in or designated for public parks, commons, playgrounds, athletic fields and outdoor recreation facilities except as provided in section twelve dash three point three A or otherwise allowed in chapter ten of the revised ordinances. This section does not apply to school department property. Strike section, strike section twelve dash three point five in its entirety and replace with A. Any person who disrupts any activity being held in a park, common playground, athletic field or recreation center shall be removed from the facility, C, except as described in subsection C. Any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall be punished by a fine according to the following schedule unless a higher applicable penalty is provided in other sections of the ordinances of the city of Attleboro. C, first offense, a hundred and fifty dollars. Second offense, and each offense thereafter, three hundred dollars. Such penalties shall be assessed in accordance with the provisions of the non-criminal disposition of violations in general laws, chapter forty, section twenty-one D, as amended. In addition, any persons responsible for damaging a park, common playground, athletic field, recreation center or equipment and facilities associated therein shall be liable to pay for the costs incurred to repair such damage, including the labor charges of staff workers or contractors who perform the repair work.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody here to speak in favor?
Hello, everyone?
Hi.
Derek Corsi, Park and Forest Street Superintendent, here to speak in favor of this ordinance change. Uh, as you all know, the park hours are open from dawn to dusk. Um, and this just formalizes, uh, no parking allowed in the park after that time. Um, as we begin to, um, to acquire more parks with parking lots, specifically the Highland Parking Lots. Uh, it's just more of an opportunity for people to park overnight. We just want to formalize that pro, uh, process so we can enforce it, uh, a little better than we have.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Derek? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor?
Good evening.
Uh, Chief Agnew, Attleboro Police Department. This, uh, is a missing piece of, uh, the ordinance that allows us to conduct enforcement in these parking lots. Uh, it was silent in the ordinance, so this is a little house clean, uh, house cleaning to give us the, uh, the authority to, uh, enforce this section of the ordinance.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Agnew? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Council Tavoris, do you see any reason for this public hearing to stay open?
I do not.
Okay, that public hearing's closed. Madam Clerk, would you read the notice for the second public hearing, please?
Certainly. Public hearing regarding the following proposed amendment to the city ordinances to amend section fifteen dash one point four as follows. Strike section fif- fifteen dash one point four in its entirety and replace with the following. Fifteen dash one point four, constables. The mayor may appoint up to four constables for a term of one year, subject to confirmation by the municipal council in the absence of certification as a law enforcement officer as described in chapter six E of the Massachusetts General Laws and five 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 CMR nine. Said constables shall have the power to serve civil process only.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor?
Evening. Kyle Agnew, Chief of Police, City of Attleboro. This is also, uh, somewhat of house cleaning. The, um, Massachusetts Police Reform Act, uh, clearly defined a law enforcement officer. Because of Massachusetts, um, it's a, in its original governmental form, constables back in the day, pilgrim days, um, were police officers. We didn't have police officers back then. So throughout the, um, the general laws and even our, I believe our constitution and Massachusetts state's constable. Therefore, constables have an extremely, uh, large amount of law enforcement authority, both civil and criminal, with absolutely no training. So they, they're not, they don't have to attend a police academy and they're not required and everything else. Therefore, the, um, um, uh, post, police officers, Standards and Training Commission cleaned up what a constable can do and what it cannot do. Therefore, we have to amend our city ordinance from the prior legislation to comply with chapter six E and CMR five five five. I believe that letter I, uh, wrote in support will clearly articulate the reasons why, um, the, the city, um, appoints constables for civil process. We, we don't want constables, uh, able to, um, violate Massachusetts general law in that CMR. Uh, in order for a constable to have law enforcement authority, he needs to attend a full-time police academy. Constables don't. However, they, they're, they're armed with that authority. If it's, if they're acting under, or acting in the manner of enforcing law, they would be in violation of six E and then there would be, uh, significant pains and penalties for the city if we allowed that. So therefore, this is what this ordinance does. It, it, it cleans it up and clearly articulates why the city is appointing constables for civil process, not law enforcement. Be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Agnew? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anybody to speak against? Anybody to speak neither for nor against? Council Tavoris, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
Thank you, that public hearing's closed. Madam Clerk, would you read the third public hearing notice?
Public hearing to present the city's capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty, twenty thirty, assembled by the Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Anyone here to speak neither for nor against? Council Cobus, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I, I do not. And just, I, I would like to comment that, uh, when asked if I felt the need to have somebody from the administration come before us for this, I thought because we did all the tours that that was not necessary. Um, if anybody feels that we should have somebody come before the committee later on, uh, please let me know. let me know. But I communicated that I did not feel that that was necessary.
Thank you. That public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, would you read the fourth public hearing notice, please?
Final public hearing regarding a new underground storage license application from Sturdy Health 211 Park Street for a 30,000 gallon diesel fuel Class II combustible liquid tank located at 219 Park Street.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor?
With your permission, I just have colored handouts of that.
Okay. I was going to say if you could just turn that a little bit so everybody can see the...
The scale is much better than that, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. William Murray from Places Associates on behalf of Sturdy Health. What Sturdy is making an application for is for an oil storage license to store 30,000 gallons of diesel fuel below grade to support the new emergency department addition. So this is, we have already obtained from the building inspector, a building permit to initiate the construction of the emergency department addition, and we obtained a license to build the 30,000 gallon tanks from the zoning board appeals in accordance with the zoning ordinance. But the fire department has said that they will not sign off on the installation without us getting a upgraded permit to store 30,000 gallons of diesel fuel underground. License. Sturdy currently has two licensed below-grade tanks. Let me introduce Dan Boyer from Sturdy Facilities, and he can fill in some of these additional details. So again, this is a license to store. We already have the permit, and we have been reviewed by the fire department and the zoning board of appeals and the building department on the design of the tank and the installation, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Where are you now in the construction of this?
Well, pending this hearing and the results of this hearing, the tanks are already on order. They can be returned, but they're on order, and this is one of the early installation items. So I should probably point out on the drawing, the dark brown is the new emergency room three-story, two-and-a-half story addition. This is on a lower level, so there's a below-grade parking garage or at-grade parking garage on the lower level. The actual emergency department is equal to the entrance where the existing emergency department is. So it's about 16 feet in elevation from the garage to the emergency department. So this tank is in our little dead end, what we call a razor blade parking lot, and it's below grade, and it will serve, it's got multiple pipes that go into the building. They then get pumped, the oil gets pumped up to two diesel generators that are on the third floor, which is a penthouse. All it is is utilities. And these two generators are going to replace most of the electrical, emergency electrical supply for the hospital, because right now they have... Okay. Right now, they have multiple generators, and they need to be taken offline. The, just so you know, that this is a double-wall tank. It's a steel 30,000 gallon single double-wall tank. It has something called interstitial monitoring, which is to say it has a moisture sensor that's set towards the bottom, so if there is a leak, an alarm will automatically go off. Likewise, the supply, the fuel supply lines are double-walled. They also, they pitch back to the tank, so there's a low point, and the supply lines also have a monitor, moisture monitor sensor, so that if enough fluid accumulates in the space around the second wall of the supply lines, another alarm will go off. And then finally, Sturdy has a third party. Come on up. You can tell this part.
So my name is Dan Boyer. I'm Director of Facilities at the local hospital here in Attleboro. So we have, by state law, we're required to have what's called AB monitoring of the oil, underground oil tanks. We contract a third party that does our monitoring on a monthly basis. They come in, they do all the safety checks, they check our alarm systems, make sure our alarm systems are still in working condition. Our current alarm systems, alarm in the boiler plant or in the generator room where one of the oil tanks is closest to. They also have a light right on the outside of the building that will light up, and it's a red flashing light. It can't be missed, so it won't go for days without somebody seeing this light, okay? And this will have all the same safety features as those tanks do.
Can I ask a question? Tell me what this, what do you use this diesel for exactly?
So it supplies fuel to our emergency generators. The hospital has six emergency generators currently. Part of this addition, we will take our three oldest and smallest generators out of service. We're going to add two very large generators. We're going to be increasing the amount of emergency power we need at the hospital with this obvious addition. In addition to that, we will have capacity for future additions if that comes with these generators.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Foa?
Thank you. Can you tell me how often it has to be refilled? How often you expect to...
So generally, you know, a tank of that size, I'm guessing we're probably going to have to refill that tank, shouldn't say refill. We'll get a delivery, because we will never drain that tank empty. We'll always keep a supply in that tank. My guess is maybe once every year to two, we'll have to get a full tanker in there to fill that tank, because we don't use that much diesel fuel unless we are on emergency power for a long stretch, a stretch of time.
Can you repeat again where that red light is?
It's right on the outside of the building. One is right by the boiler plant, one is on the, right near the generator room door on Park Street, and wherever this one is going to be located, it'll be located right outside the building, most likely, I imagine, right near an entrance to the parking garage, but I can't say for sure where that alarm is going to end up being situated.
Does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Tavarez?
Can you speak to any potential or actual situations where you would use this emergency fuel?
The last time we were, well, the last time we were on emergency power, we actually did, annually, we do preventive maintenance of our large switchgear at the hospital. April 5th this year, we shut down all normal power coming into the hospital. We were on emergency power for about eight hours that day, and we do that every year because we feel that's a good way for us to not only exercise our generators, once every three years, we have to run them for at least four hours under load by code. And we, so we feel that the preventive maintenance that we do is well worth our efforts. We don't have a whole lot of power failures at the hospital. The last long-term power failure I can think of in my career at Sturdy was Superstorm Sandy. We were out for about 22 hours during Superstorm Sandy.
Do we have any other questions for this gentleman? Did you have something else to say, you wanted to say, Bill?
I did. I wanted Dan to address why 30,000 gallons.
So the reason we're asking for 30,000 gallons here, the CMS, which is the Center for Medicaid and Medicaid Services, requires that the hospital have a 96-hour plan for how to stay sustainable without any outside assistance, okay? So this 30,000 gallon tank will allow us not only to meet the required load that we are putting onto these generators, but any load that might put on these generators into the future as well.
Okay. Does anybody else have any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Lavoie, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Is there anybody else to speak in favor? Is there anybody here to speak against? Is there anybody here to speak neither for nor against? Counselor Lavoie, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
That public hearing is closed. That's our final public hearing. And from there, we will go into, let's see, Committee of the Full. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on any city matters? Did you want to speak to the... If you could just state your name for the record, please?
My name is Greg Robinson. The other day, this, I'm here pertaining to an incident that happened over at Dollar Tree, like where the Fresenius, the medical center is. I have a complaint. It was like a review that I sent to Google that didn't go through, but one of the Gatter drivers basically let a woman die in the parking lot the other day, and I tried sending Google, like Gatter, a Google review, and it didn't, it didn't register through, so this is basically just to maybe send through the Department of Transportation to Gatter to maybe relay this. I don't know if that's a possibility at all. She, the driver of the bus literally let her die in the parking lot.
I'm not sure.
She didn't go into the medical center or anything like that, so I thought it was just kind of an issue. I don't know.
And that's the complaint that you have there?
Yeah, this is the complaint.
So can you drop that to Virginia in this office? If you go around the other side, Virginia can take that from you, and I'll...
I just didn't want it to go unsaid, because she just, she literally just drove away. She let her die in the park, like, didn't say anything. She was standing outside of the medical center and just let her die. What is this? So...
Yeah, if you leave that with Virginia, we'll send that to the proper department, which I think would be the health department. So will you do that for us? Is your name on there as well?
No, I can write my name on it.
Can you put your name and contact info on there for me? And then give it to Virginia, and we'll see if we can get it. I think it'll go to the health department.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
No apology needed.
I had a comment. I wanted to make it one of the public hearings, and I missed my opportunity.
Can you just state your name, please?
Pamela Bremen, 169 Knight Avenue.
Is it a closed public hearing? We can't take your comments if the public hearing is already closed. Is it something that you could send information to your counselor, or...
No, it's just too bad.
I'm sorry. If the public hearing is closed, we can't take any further comment.
That's what I was going to object to.
That's what? I'm sorry?
I was going to object to the public hearing being closed.
Oh.
It would have to be during the public hearing commented.
What ward are you? What ward do you live in?
Six.
Six, yeah. Can I say why I object to the public hearing being closed, even though I accept the fact that it is closed?
Sure. Are you going to tell us what specific public hearing it was?
Yes, I just wanted to get this far first. It was about the capital improvements budget. I thought the public hearing was to present the budget, and I didn't hear any presentation. So I would hope that that fact alone would cause you to continue it to a later time when it would be presented.
So the capital improvements public hearing, it doesn't really present a budget. The capital improvements book...
The agenda states that the purpose is to present the budget.
Could I suggest...
So it says, hold one second, please. To present the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2026 through 202030, assembled by the Department of Planning and Development. Because the, it's not really a budget per se.
Unless I missed it completely, there was no presentation.
Well, typically, we would discuss this during the committee meetings. Was there something in the capital improvements that was of particular concern, or...
Yes, I spent a lot of time studying it, and I, there are a number of points I wanted to make about how it wasn't easy for a layperson to read or for citizens to come in and comment on it, but it's always going to ask that the hearing be continued. If, you know, if all the budget figures are not finalized yet, I understood that was might be a concern, that I understand. I know the city, this city, the top officials and all her boards are able to update themselves on figures and change things around and make things work out, and even if budget amounts are approved, you can later vote to re-approve them, but that was the only opportunity the public had to come and say, and I don't feel that that was handled properly.
So you weren't here earlier when we closed the public hearing? Is that what you're saying?
I was, but it went so fast, I didn't realize it was just going to have no presentation at all.
Okay, so basically, the capital improvements program, the council will make recommendations to the administration, and the administration will be the one to decide what's funded and what's not, which will be in the public, I mean, excuse me, the budget hearings. Did you have a comment, Counselor Cobus?
No, and that was mainly my comment, is that in the committee meeting, which is coming up next week, is when we'll discuss sort of our recommendations for, to the administration for what we should, we suggest the administration should focus on within that capital improvement plan, their plan. So if you reach out to your specific counselors, if there are items within there that you would want your counselors to argue in favor for...
Support or not.
Support, that would be sort of something to do, to reach out to specific counselors to say, support this or support that.
I understand all that, and yes, I accept all that, and I look forward to obtaining more information, but that precludes the citizens from commenting on this when you close the public hearing. Again, if you just left it open, I understand the council can call a second public hearing on this issue if they so wish, so maybe I could get somebody to consider this. Citizens have a right to comment on this, and they have a right to comment when everything is all set up, facts and figures are more or less stabilized.
Right, I agree with you completely, and that's why we had the public hearing. You know, I don't, you know, there is a timeframe when we have to submit the capital improvements plan, so to continue it would just drag that process on, and as I stated before, we give recommendations to the administration, and obviously, the administration is the one that, you know, we make a punch list of what's important to us, so it's not really our decision. We can't force the administration to do anything. Counselor Lavoie, did you have a comment, a question?
I do, but I'll allude to City Cork first.
Madam Clerk, did you have a question?
Vice President, if you don't mind, I was going to kind of explain a little. So the capital improvements book is like, do you remember that when they used to have a Christmas wish list book back in the day? That's what the capital improvements book is. It's a wish list from all the departments who have very serious projects that they need to have done, and it's just presented to us as is.
But it's broken down into fiscal years, budgets for the fiscal year.
But it doesn't have the budget, it just says the cost, and that's what...
Many of them say TBD, so we don't even know the cost, yet they're still in the capital improvements program, therefore, there would be some consideration to put them in the budget. The public needs to know this as much as you guys do, really, so...
So if anything that says TBD could be something that's future and that we, they can't determine how much, what that cost would be, but whatever we allocate for any projects that the administration sends down is always public.
There are dozens of items that had TBD, net... There were dozens of items that had TBD next to their title and were in the fiscal year 2026 column. So that would mean that they were sort of in the program to be started, if not completed, in the next 13 months.
Counsel Cobus, did you have a question?
Vice President Dolan, I can take that feedback and get that to Gary to maybe make the cap improvement document a little bit more descriptive and add some, like a legend or something in there so that it's a little bit more accessible to the public. And I could definitely take that feedback to Gary.
Plus, we can't tell which items were supposed to be in the 2025 budget, yet never came about. And we sort of need to know that history to, wanted to know where we are in 2026 and to 2030. Thank you for letting me speak at all. I know I missed my opportunity, so thanks for letting me say anything.
You're welcome. Oh, you know what? Can we get, do we need her, did we get her address? Do you have your, can we have your address for the record, please?
Pardon me?
Can we have your address for the record?
169 Knight Avenue, number 210.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the council? So I'd like to make a motion to convene committee of the whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. So now we will move on to the man's communication.
May 6, 2025. Dear Municipal Council, I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Dennis Morton to fill a three-year term of water superintendent. Said term to expire February 2028. Among his other qualifications, Mr. Morton has many years of supervisory experience in municipal water departments, has experience managing capital projects, and brings a new management style and fresh perspective to our water department. He will be guided in his new role by a newly created list of fiscal year 2025-26 water department priorities. Mr. Morton was offered the position with the City of Attleboro effective May 5, 2025, under a temporary 90-day appointment in accordance with Section 3.3B of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter. I would also like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge the hard work and dedication of Matt Karati, who was promoted to Assistant Water Superintendent in late December and shortly thereafter agreed to serve as Acting Water Superintendent while we searched for a new superintendent. I am sincerely grateful for Matt's commitment and service and I look forward to seeing Dennis and Matt working as a team, making meaningful and positive improvements in our water department as we strive to better serve our water customers and our community.
Human Resources Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resource Director Lynn Daven regarding a memorandum of agreement between the City of Attleboro and the LIUNA Public Employees Local Union, number 1144 Laborers Unit DPW. The city and the laborers union DPW were able to reach an agreement to rejoin the laborers unit collective bargaining agreement to obtain the benefits in the laborers union agreement and for a 50 cent per hour raise effective April 27, 2025. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body approve memorandum of agreement between the City of Attleboro and LIUNA Public Employees Local Union, number 1144 Laborers Unit DPW.
Human Resources, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Council on Aging Kelly Lee regarding the need for funds to repair the leaking roof at 25 South Main Street. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $3,500 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the Council on Aging Maintenance of Buildings account.
City Property and Claims.
I respectfully submit a communication from Fire Chief Scott Taylor Chance regarding the need for funds due to the retirement of an employee on June 7, 2025. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $126,364.03 from the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government account to the Fire Earned Time Payment account.
Public Safety, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need for funds to replace a traffic signal. The traffic signal on the corner of Pleasant Street and Emery Street was damaged by a vehicle accident. The requested amount is the difference between the amount received from the insurance company and the quote received to repair the traffic light. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $6,946.40 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the Public Works Maintenance Traffic Light account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the donation of 18 brand-new disc golf baskets, 28 brand-new disc golf tee pads, and 20 used disc golf baskets to the Park and Forestry Department from Jewelry City Disc Golf. The estimated value of this disc golf assortment is $12,106. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
City Property and Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the donation of a Speed Queen FF700BN front-load washer and two stainless steel fill hoses to the City of Attleboro's Animal Shelter from Gene Boishman of 20 Howith Ave, South Attleboro. The estimated value of this washing machine and hose set is $2,211.01. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
City Property and Claims, please.
As you will recall, earlier this year, your honorable body authorized the expenditure of $1,899,616.05 in Chapter 9 funds. For your information, on March 25, 2025, the city was notified that its portion of the fiscal year 25 fair share apportionment would be available for immediate use, which provides an additional $274,637.94 to the city's Matt Dash Mass Dot Chapter 90 account.
FYI to all counselors, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Spencer Lenz to fill an expired term on the Board of Recreation Commissioners, term to expire February 2028.
Human Resources, please.
It has come to my attention that Carrie Gray was not sworn in within the appropriate time for her reappointment to the Council on Human Rights. Therefore, I hereby request respectfully resubmit for confirmation by your honorable body the reappointment of Carrie Gray to the Council on Human Rights, term to expire in February 2028.
Human Resources, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding obsolete textbooks that the school department would like to surplus. There was no interest in the books from any of the city departments. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. And there's a lot of books.
City Property and Claims, please.
As you know, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and Article 6, Section 2 of the City Charter, set the perimeters for submission of the proposed annual budget to the municipal council. The same provisions require your honorable body adopt the budget with or without amendments within 45 days of the proposed budget submission. Though it was our original intention to submit the fiscal year 26 proposed annual budget to your honorable body at an earlier date, we were unable to do so for reasons beyond our control. Thus, in order to abide by the above-mentioned statutory provisions, I respectfully request your honorable body call for a special meeting on Tuesday, May 13, 2025, for the presentation of the fiscal year 26 proposed general funds budget and the fiscal year 26 proposed budget for the water and the wastewater enterprise funds. By holding a special meeting on May 13 and receiving the proposed budget that evening, the municipal council will be able to review the budget and conduct budget meetings before the 45-day deadline, which is June 27, 2025.
Thank you. That'll go to Finance Committee and there'll be a special meeting on 5/13. As far as the time, Counsel Cobus, would 6:30 be a problem for you as the chair?
No, that'd be great.
6:30?
Yes.
Okay, so the special meeting would be 6:30 on 5/13. Thank you.
I respectfully submit a communication from Recreation Director Kristy Clausen regarding the fundraising efforts of the Independence Day Celebration Committee. Since last September, the Independence Day Celebration Committee has been working tirelessly to play, plan a citywide Independence Day fireworks event. As you know, the committee was created as a result of a strong and clear message from the Attleboro community that fireworks are a vital part of the city's celebration of Independence Day. The committee's goal is to raise $60,000 to cover the full cost of the event, including fireworks, safety details, and event logistics. I am pleased to report that as of April 30, 2025, the committee has raised $37,607 through resident donations and community fundraising efforts. Combined with the $10,898 remaining in the fiscal year 25 budget, Citywide Special Event Professional Services account, and approved for this purpose, the current total amount of available event funds is $48,505. While we remain hopeful that additional fundraising efforts will yield more donations and sponsorships, time is running short and we are becoming increasingly concerned about our ability to close the $11,495 gap between our currently available event funds and the total event costs. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $11,495 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the Citywide Other Financial Uses and further transfer $11,495 to Citywide Other Financial Sources and further transfer $11,495 to account Citywide Special Event Professional Services to fund this special event.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need for funds for repairs to the police radio system. Recently, the police department experienced a problem with radio transmissions. An emergency call was made to the radio repair vendor and it was determined there was a problem with the copper transmission line. As it would be class prohibitive to replace the copper transmission line, the recommendation is to convert the transmission line to ultra-high frequency UHF from the police station to Ides Hill Radio Tower. It is important to note that at some point in the future, the radio system will need to be replaced. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $11,808.41 from Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the Police Maintenance of Radio's account.
Public Safety, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the need for funds to pay the remainder of fiscal year 25 electric invoices, repairs to copper machine, pre-employment physicals, porta-john services, small renovations at Fifth Square, and repairs to chipper and portable light tower, and police details for tree removals. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $22,000 from the Park Salary account to the following. $1,500 to Park Lights and Power, $9,500 to Park Maintenance of Equipment, $9,000 to Park Professional Services, and $2,000 to Park Police Details.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Acting Water Superintendent Matthew Karati regarding the need for funds to replace a water service line on Lindsay Street that was damaged during the water main replacement project. The Lindsay Street Water Main Replacement Project was funded by Opera and the deadline for funds to be committed has passed. However, additional funds are needed to replace the water service line. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $6,893.42 from Fund Globe Street Other Financing Uses to fund Briss Opera Other Financing Sources.
Public Works Committee, please.
As you are aware, the annual city budget is constructed based on a 52-week calendar, equating to 364 days. As such, there is always what is known as the 53rd week for salary and wages expenses that must be accommodated in the budget. Fiscal year 2025 includes Sunday, June 29 and Monday, June 30 within the 53rd week that must be funded using fiscal year 2025 funds. Each department has different needs for the 53rd week, which depend on the nature of the operations and impacts of staff turnover through the fiscal year. When preparing the budget, we included a reserve for 53rd week within the general budget and enterprise budgets in anticipation for these needs. Additionally, depending on hiring or salary changes throughout the course of the fiscal year, we may have to provide additional funding to departments to meet unanticipated personnel cost needs. We also included this as a part of the 53rd week. Correction, in order to provide funding for personal expenses for the fiscal year 2025 53rd week, I respectfully request the following transfers.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from City Collector Zaida Kika regarding the need for funds to cover the cost of postage for the remainder of fiscal year 25. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $10,000 from Collector's Salary and Wages account to the Collector Postage account.
Finance Committee, please.
Sincerely, Kathleen D. Simone, Mayor.
Thank you, and we can move on to the clerk's communication, please.
Clerk's Communication, May 6, 2025. We have received a petition from Massachusetts Electric Company due in Business's National Grid in Verizon New England Incorporated, requesting permission to install one Joe pole on Dunham Street, install a stub pole 5116-84 south of pole 5116, 30 feet plus minus, and sidewalk anchor guy to support leaning pole 5116, Attleboro, Mass.
Public Works Committee and Counsel Angelo, would you like to call for a public hearing on June 3?
Yes, I would.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
We have received a letter from William E. Murray, Project Manager for Sturdy Hospital's Temporary Helicopter Landing Pad. I'm going to read into the record, Vice President Dolan.
Which one was this? Was this the miscommunication on? Yeah, please read that, please.
Okay. Honorable council members, on April 15, 2025, I presented the facts related to the special permit application for Sturdy Health for a temporary helicopter landing pad. After that meeting, I was informed of two items that I did not correctly relay to the council. We do try to present accurate and complete information at all public presentations and therefore we would like to quickly amend items presented as follows. Number one, Sturdy has informed me that the average monthly use of the current pad and therefore the temporary pad is eight flights a month. This is less than the six to 16 values I presented to the council. Number two, VFR flights. I was incorrecting in stating that Sturdy does not receive flights at night as part of the VFR criteria. Apparently, at nighttime, in non-incliment weather conditions, the medical helicopter services can and do conduct nighttime flights for emergency services. The statement that they do not fly in inclement weather does still apply. I apologize for these oversights and relay of incorrect information. It is my hope that the record can be modified to include the above correction. I'm happy to further discuss these items with the council. I have members of Sturdy's emergency department staff answer other detailed operational questions the council may have. Sincerely, Places Associates, Associates Incorporated, William E. Murray, Project Manager.
Thank you, Madam Clark. That's an FYI to all counselors.
And lastly, we have received a letter from the Board of Election Commissioners with an attached recommendation from Deputy Chief Timothy Cook of the Attleboro Police Department for the number of offices needed to staff Attleboro's polling location. It is requested that the city council approve this recommendation for all elections to be held in the 2025 calendar year.
Ordinances, elections, and legislative matters, please.
Let's lose all communication.
Thank you, Madam Clark. So we will move on to committee reports, starting with Counsel Cobus.
Thank you. According to the Finance Committee, from the document of May 6, 2025, I move to transfer $5,000 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Library Lights and Power.
Second.
Do you have any comments, Counsel Cobus?
I do not. This is due to an increase in rates and it's just to cover the cost for the rest of the fiscal year.
Do any other counselors have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
9808.
Motion passes.
Thank you. From the document of May 6, 2025, I move to transfer $1,000 from account Library Security Services to account Library Salaries.
Second.
Do you have any comments, Counsel Cobus?
No, this is just to cover the 50 cent raise to the laborers that we voted on back in January.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
9808.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the document of March 4, 2025, I move to approve the submission. Thank you. From the docket of March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, I move to approve the submission of the C D B G Program Year Twenty-twenty-five Annual Action Plan. For the period of Ju- ju- excuse me, July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-sixth. To the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. In addition, once the final allocation for program year twenty-twenty-five is released by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The municipal council approves the administration increasing or decreasing funds proportionally in each proposed category.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Counsel Kobas?
We heard about this at the public hearing, and I encourage people to support it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Any other councillors have questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Kobas.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And that concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
There is all business with the I Q and Infrastructure Committee meeting this evening. Meeting is canceled.
Can you call for a committee meeting?
I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time. Thank you.
Did you, did you wanna handle, uh, Counsel, um.
Reynolds?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Uh, committee right now?
I would be happy to do that.
Okay.
From the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, I move to select the Attleboro Historic Preservation Society. As the party to whom the Academy Building, twenty-eighth Sanford Street, be sold, subject to a purchase and sale agreement acceptable to the mayor and city councillor.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, uh, Counsel Foah?
Uh, I think this is a excellent use of, uh, this disposition of this property, and I encourage all of us to approve it.
Does anybody else have any questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Uh, that concludes the business of the City Property and Claims Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you, Acting President Dolan, from the docket of May sixth, two, sorry, reporting for the License Committee from the docket of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. I move to approve the renewal of Ring a Bell application from Adam Pelagi of Pelagi Brothers Ice Cream LLC to be at Hayward Field, seventy-three North Ave.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Lavoy?
Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward.
This will be a voice, does anybody else have any questions? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, I move to approve a renewal. Of the Ring the Bell application from Robert Pelagi of Pelagi Brothers Ice Cream LLC to be at Hayward Field, seventy-three North Ave.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Any comments, Counsel Lavoy?
Pretty straightforward.
And any other comments from anybody? Uh, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And from, finally, from the docket of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I move to approve the new Class Two Auto Application from Saint John Automotive Inc. Doing business as Better Auto. At four seventy-three Washington Street for ten customer spaces and twenty-one display spaces.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Lavoy?
Uh, briefly, I I think everyone is here for the public hearing and heard, uh. Mr. Jacoby speak on behalf of, uh, the two business partners, but everything checks out from, um, what I've looked into with the Attorney General's Office, so. Uh, it looks like a good use of it once dealership, now vacant property, so just happy to see another business coming into the city.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, and that concludes the business for the License Committee, and I would call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counselor, can we go with Counsel Angela to report for Public Works, please?
Yeah, reporting for Public Works Committee, from the docket of April first, twenty-twenty-five, I move to approve a special permit application. From Sturdy Health Apoxy for a temporary helicopter landing pad to relocate it to eleven Apoxy adjacent to the hospital campus. While the permanent landing landing pad is under construction.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
Obviously, we just heard, um, uh. You know, from everybody here right here, and I strongly, uh, support this and hope everybody else will, uh. I think they answered all the questions, and, um, this is, uh, very important to everybody and anybody's families that are, uh, need some help at, uh, Sturdy and, um. And I'm pretty satisfied with everything that we're told, and this is, um, this is, we need to get this done.
Doesn't, doesn't anybody else, uh, Counsel Kobas?
Thank you. Um, I was, I was a little bit hesitant on on this, and, um. There were a number of questions I had. I I I agree. I think they they answered those questions. I'd like to applaud Vice President Dolan for for your diligence and and. I know we went out there and walked the the side a little bit and and checked it out, and so I. I am comfortable moving forward now. I was a little bit hesitant earlier, but, uh, I I do think it makes sense, and I thi- I think it is important for the safety of of the residents and and what they're doing.
Counsel Sawyer, did you have your hand up?
Um, I I did. I am glad to hear they can't, you know, them coming back and that they are concerned as as and the residents are about the safeties. Um, of the helicopters coming in, but I also, um, think that it's a great thing for them to be doing to, um.
Do it temporarily, um, to make sure that all the people that need to to get to the level-one trauma centers as they need to, so I appreciate that.
Uh, Counsel Foah?
Thank you. Uh, it does concern me that there is no time limit on this, or is there with special permits? They represented to us that it would be for approximately two years at most, but I don't see anything here. That, uh, limits them to that time period.
So when I spoke with them, and I and I believe the maximum was three, as and and the part of the problem is. And I was wondering, and I didn't understand why they had to, why do they have to rip down the helipad they have now?
Excuse me, I do understand why that's going. I I just wanna know if there's.
There is no time limit.
There's no time limit.
No. I'm sorry. Did you wanna continue?
I see that as a problem.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you, Acting President Dolan. Uh, I support this, and I thank Sturdy for continuing to invest in the city as the largest employer in the city. Um, and I think it's just growing pains for a much bigger thing down the road for Attleboro. And for the surrounding communities in the healthcare in Massachusetts, so I support it, and I would ask everyone else to support it as well. Thank you.
Counsel, could I direct a question to Counsel Foah?
I'm sorry.
Could I direct a question to Counsel Foah to get a better explanation of what her question is?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, what are you, you're concerned about a time limit on a permit, or I'm I'm not understanding, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm concerned that this, uh, permit would authorize them to use this temporary pad for five years.
But they stated it was for three years.
I think, I think it's because there is no, like, expiration date per se o- on it. Um, I I assume that's your concern, Counsel Foah?
Yes, there's, yes, I believe in writing.
Right. Um, I mean, I I don't.
But you're right. They they did say three years, which wasn't a a long period of time. Nonetheless, if I may.
You may.
I know the construction projects are delayed, um, that does happen. I would why, I would be more comfortable with this. Were there in writing something that said special permit for a period of three years.
Understood. And and just to comment, um, and and it's not just construction delays. When they're, when they're deconstructing and getting rid of the old building and creating the new building, the problem is there's gonna be cranes there. And so even though the helipad will still be there for the time being, the, um, emergency helicopter can't land anywhere near cranes. So that's, that's, that's part of the problem as well, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Understood. Thank you.
Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you. Just touching on, I guess, the matter at hand. Um, you know, I, I, this is gonna cost the hospital more money to have this. I don't think that their plan is to have a temporary heli- helipad for twenty years, however many years. And I know they mentioned three years as, you know, the high end. They mentioned the goal would be around two years. But nonetheless, that doesn't take away from the fact that the city, if something was being abused, we could revoke a permit or move into the process of revoking the permit. It's not a never-ending, not like binding agreement. We can go back and and cancel this permit through the same process it was put into place, so. Um, that'd be my comments.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Kobas.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
No.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
That's all for Public Works, and I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Holmes?
Thank you. Reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, I have, um, three items this evening from the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five. I move to appropriate two hundred and twenty thousand, uh, eight hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents from account. Undesignated fund balance, recash, general government to account fire salary and wages.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lavoy. Do you have any comments, Counsel Holmes?
I do. This was for, um, somebody that has worked for the city for over thirty-two years. I had mentioned it in committee, so that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
From the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, I move to approve expending of such funds at any future grant amendments regarding. The receipt of a second round of funding as part of the fire firefighter safety equipment grant for fiscal year twenty-five. From the Department of Fire Services in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. In accordance with the grant. The funds will be used to procure the following firefighting equipment, structural firefighting gloves and nomax hoods for structural wildfires, uh, woodland firefighting. This grant does not require any matching funds.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lavoy. Do you have any comments, Counsel?
I do, I do not.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Kobas.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, I move to approve expending of such funds in any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of fiscal year twenty-five. Student Awareness of Fire Education Safe Grant and the, and the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five Senior Safe Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, seven thousand, two hundred for, uh, student safe and two thousand, six hundred for senior safe. This grant does not require any matching funds.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lavoy. Do you have any comments?
I do have a discussion in committee.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That's all the business this evening. I'll call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Uh, Counsel Angelo?
Reporting for Human Resource Veterans and Human Services Committee from the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, move to approve the revised inter-municipal agreement to formally join the Northern Bristol County. Public Health Alliance Council approved original agreement on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any questions?
Uh, we discussed.
Any comments?
Yeah, we discussed it in committee, but this is just, uh, correcting the pa- uh, the wording, and that's all.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
From the docket of April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, move to approve the appointment of Brian Amrell to fill an unexpired term with the Traffic Study Commission Term Expiation February twenty-twenty-sixth.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel?
Just that we had Brian in here and, uh, and, uh, this, I've known Brian for a long time, and, uh, he'll be a great addition to the Traffic Study Commission. And we desperately need, uh, an additional person to that committee.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all for Human Resource Veterans Human Services Committee, and I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Sawyer?
Uh, reporting for Zoning Land Use and Sustainability Committee. I have one item tonight. From the docket of April first, twenty-twenty-five, I move to transfer ten thousand dollars from account. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Planning Zoning Consultant for the re- for the review of our current zoning ordinances.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Sawyer?
Um, I wanted to just comment that, uh, we did hear from Gary Aragian for the purpose of this, um, zoning consultant. Um, at our, uh, a recent committee, uh, meeting, and I think that, um, we should all. Um, support this and getting the help that he needed to for the zoning ordinances review.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Kobas.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That is all the business that I have for the Zoning Land Use and Sustainability Committee, and I look forward to the next committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Waterman?
Transportation and Traffic Committee does not have any business this evening. We'll meet at the next appropriate.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Tavares?
Thank you, Acting President Dolan, reporting for ordinances, elections, and legislative matters from the docket of May sixth, twenty-twenty-five. I move to transfer seventy thousand dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-one-two-one-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-eight-nine-zero.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Tavares?
Um, just, uh, just to refresh our memories, since this was, uh, a couple of weeks ago from from committee. Um, this request has come for, from the administration to cover additional legal costs that were unforeseen at the beginning of, uh. The, uh, the fiscal year, um, so this will, this will get us through FY twenty-five.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Kobas?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
In the docket of March eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, I move to amend the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro as follows. Strike section five dash seven point five in its entirety and replace with the following. President Dolan, may I waive the rest of the reading?
You may. You read it during committee, correct?
Yes.
Sure.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes. Do you have any comments, Counsel Tavares?
Yeah, so just to recap this one, um. This ordinance change would allow, uh, more flexibility to the city auditor and the mayor in terms of, uh, expenses that are under a thousand dollars. So currently, the the ordinance addresses, um, expenses that are under five hundred dollars that don't need to go through the same procurement process. Um, it also allows the city auditor some additional control measures, um, should the auditor decide that even for expenses under a thousand dollars. That, um, that there be a contract in place, um, for, uh, for certain expenses.